On our October fifth, uh, town hall update here for COVID nineteen pandemic here. So joining us uh with the President Jonathan Nez, uh, Dr. Jill Jim, Dr. Profilia Fowler, Captain Brian Johnson, who's been Navajo IHS, and Dell um of from our Epi team here. Uh, so we appreciate our health professionals joining us as we always do. We um get the pertinent updated information, what with the uh the latest uh positive cases in our area. Vaccine rollout, what that looks like, vaccine updates and the like. So again, we pray that as we open up this town hall update, that the people of the land should know that you'd be blessed while hearing this information. So we appreciate you, pray for you, and uh we're all in this together. So let's go to our Creator, Sheshaatie and God in prayer. Uh, yeah, Sheshaatie and God, we come to you, Lord, this morning. And uh this COVID nineteen town hall update, Father, we bring information, vital like updates uh for the people, Lord. May they be blessed, Lord, with this knowledge and or the wisdom that we have as leaders, Father God. We pray that we access your your wisdom, Lord, uh, which is supreme, which is sufficient for us, Lord. We we thank you for the recent moisture, Lord, for the animals, Lord, and for drying barren land, Lord, that it be revitalized and uh refreshed, Lord, with rain. Today will be getting more rain, Lord, today. May those that are in hardship, Lord, be able to be safe in the rain, to be warm in those uh structures, Lord, that are um needing repair. Father God, we pray for uh uh provision and resources, Lord, for that to to happen for all our people across the land. Give you again this meeting time, Lord, to all the information, all of the uh updates. Father, may it bless again the people of the land and be with us, Lord, in our this time together. Lord, may we all be in safety, all our families, Lord, extended families, Lord, as we pray for the Navajo Nation. Uh, yeah, Sheshaatie and God, we thank you, give you all this uh time, Lord, of acknowledgement and praise and worship and honor, Lord, let's do your name in Jesus' name we pray. Uh, yeah, Sheshaatie and God, amen and amen. So again, uh, thank you for that. Uh, we appreciate uh you joining us again. It is October fifth and welcome to our COVID nineteen town hall update. And so without further ado, we do have President Jonathan Nez standing in the wings here waiting to join us. So uh ladies and gentlemen, the President of the great Navajo Nation, Jonathan Nez.
Yeah, mute, President.
God is the God of the Jonathan Nez on his the Navajo Nation President. Vice President Myron Lizer. Doctor Jill Jim. Del Yasi. Epidemiology. Uh, Washington. He could do Captain Brian Johnson. Doctor Profilia Fowler. He could do the the Division of Human Resources. Now, the vice president Myron Lizer. So the uh. Uh, the. Chington. Ah, ah, ah. Eh, eh. Ah, do. Call a wish. Call a kiss. Ah, do. The. No, uh, the. So eh, but not. So eh, eh. So eh, she been in a eh, yeah. He mad. Ah, day. Could oh. Eh, eh. Ah, do. Now, it's eh, now, uh, now, the. Eh, yeah, come. Allah. Twenty nine. In lay. Uh, ah, lay. Uh, the. Uh, bond. Yeah, it's a bit sad. So eh, New Mexico Fair. So eh, she do. Eh, yeah, the more. Ah, do. Start. So the. Ah, do. Eh, ah, do. Kind of. Do, do. So. I don't. The. Uh, hot. South. So eh, been in a eh. Ah, hot. He's been. Uh, he must. Uh, bad.
So here, uh, you know, we just want to um let everybody know that the test capacity of seven day test positivity rate testing has increased to two point four percent. You can put that slide up. Um, Eli. Ten point four percent. Test capacity, the the flu is around. So people do get sick and when they get sick, they get concerned and they wanna get tested. That's the reason why there's a lot more testing going on. Of course, COVID. COVID nineteen is still amongst us. So with the increase in test positivity, uh, there is a concern. I was just saying in Navajo that uh the New Mexico State Fair just uh is is, I think, about ended. Arizona State Fair is is starting. On the state of New Mexico, Vice President will give you an update is it was a big increase. So, you know, these things, you wonder, do they play a factor in the increase? This the fairs, the rodeos, these events that are happening all around us and and we go over there. Let up our guard and take our masks down and have a corn dog or a or a um turkey uh turkey wing or uh, you know, drumstick, things like like that, and then you end up uh sick. So you need to, we all need to be aware of our surroundings there in in and around the Navajo Nation. The hospital capacity in the middle part, hospital beds are at sixty two percent average. ICU beds are sixty percent. What does that mean? That means not many of our people are needing to be admitted into the hospital. So there's still uh, you know, available beds uh at the hospital. Of course, we need those available beds for those um individuals who need medical attention that are co- non-COVID nineteen related. You know, some of those appointments were ca- canceled last year and healthcare facilities are wanting to take care of those appointments. And the contact tracers to daily case ratio is four. So, you know, we need to also remind ourselves that these contact tracers are doing everything they can to keep the numbers down. The next uh slide there compares the US and Navajo Nation, the blue and the yellow. And you can see there that we are, uh, it doesn't look it right now, but the the yellow, the orange there is looking at, it's flattening out, but it it's consistent in going up and down. But it's not a big increase like you see uh there in the United States. The United States overall is going down. So it's a concern for us. Do we wanna go back into the red category? That that's that's on all of us. You know, I mean, we don't wanna be told to uh stay at the home uh and and do what we went through last year. So stay on the Navajo Nation. That's the best thing that we can uh say to you and push back on these. Uh, family uh. Family clusters or family homes. Uh, you go to the next slide, I'm sorry. You you probably hear noise, chainsaw ha- uh, chainsaws out there. Uh, cutting down the um tree there outside. Uh, Navajo Nation COVID nineteen SARS train surveillance. Uh, the Delta variant to this day, four hundred and seventy eight, that's the report twenty two. Delta and Epsilon is eighty one. Could go through the list, seven hundred and sixty four total variants identified here on the Navajo Nation. Now, on the next slide, the high risk chapters, September seventeen through the thirtieth, thirty five chapters. There were forty last week. Those are the chapters that are high risk. Lot of traveling, if you can go to the next slide, these are drivers of transmission. Again, family gatherings, birthday parties, social events. Uh, workplace, uh, school bus yard was one that was uh reported, school transmission. Elementary school, one report, boarding school, room report. We we did so well. We didn't have any evidence of school transmission. Now we're starting to see that. And if you're sick, e- even though if you think it's just the flu, stay home. And uh and for adults, the same, don't go to work. Don't travel. Huh, that that's simple as that. And I know I'm gonna get a bunch of people saying, well, we gotta travel for this and that, you know. Plan ahead. Plan ahead, please. State Fair, New Mexico and Arizona, Arizona's coming up, so we just, you know, I mean, if we want these numbers to go down here on the Navajo Nation, we just gotta follow through on these things. The State Fair, we we could miss another year. Let's think of our family members and our Navajo Nation people. I understand there was a rodeo and gallop and dances happening. You know, you don't need to uh attend these to stay home. Balloon Fiesta is another thing that's happened. Uh, we've been cooped up for eighteen months, but if we want this to go away, we we all gotta work together. I speak to the people around us too, not just our Navajo people. Leaders in Gallup, leaders in Albuquerque, all around us. Let's take this virus seriously. We need your help. And, you know, to control of your communities. That's why we are all elected to do, help our people get past this uh public health emergency. So I'll stop there. Uh, I'll turn the time over to our Vice President. Take care of yourself, God bless you. Continue to uh wear your mask, social distance, uh, stay home and wash your hands with soap and water. Use hand sanitizers. God bless you all. Vice President.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. President. Um, good morning, everybody. It's good to be with you all this morning. Again, it is October fifth. Appreciate our President's updates and really just their current urging to uh stay home and uh to uh help stamp out this uh virus here. As you do see, many traveling abroad to uh, you know, attend various functions, um, meetings, conferences, whatnot. It does seem to be uh burgeoning there. Everybody maybe has a uh enhanced level of confidence as we do travel. We do see people traveling, but uh, you know, again, those numbers are are indicative of uh the current surge that's going on within New Mexico. Again, uh, just the evidence there is uh the large gatherings, um, the um the Fiesta, the State Fair, uh, the the gatherings, uh, even our football teams and wh- hmm whatnot are are gathering, right? So, yeah, I know those are outdoors, but uh really all we can do is ad- as leaders is advocate for you all to know your surroundings, to stay safe. And of course, the next step on that thought, on that comment is uh, you know, when in doubt, just uh, you know, the easiest thing is to stay home to curtail travel, to, you know, uh, just refrain from uh attending those events there that are suspect. So again, those are just the uh current threats that are around us, so but we appreciate you all. And again, those um, those uh uh spreads that are happening uh all around. We've seen Arizona kinda go through their their phase, their surge, and then it was Utah just most recently. And then um, uh, this past weekend was New Mexico, so it just kinda seems to be all all around us. But um, we do continue to pray for you all. We uh as uh the leaders of the Navajo Nation, you know, from time to time, do find ourselves in in those areas where, you know, people gather to give ideas, give thoughts, uh, to list their current issues and 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 the like. So uh, again, it's just the knowing where you are, uh, knowing your surroundings. And uh, one day, one day soon, very soon, we'll see these um these numbers start to dwindle. But uh, and and now we're coming into the cold flu season, you know. Um, I can't really recall there being a a tremendous surge of cold flu last year, uh, simply because everybody was more, you know, uh, uh, very, they were really um trying to be safe. They were really trying to be um, uh, and keeping their masks on, limiting travel and all those things. So if we could just take a step back to last year, you know, we can be uh a lot safer and uh keep those numbers down. So uh, that's just um, you know, some of the uh urging that we have, um, asking our people all around. And, you know, and we do put that out there. Uh, we do have others that watch, and then there's many more others that that are not watching this. But um, you know, simply the update needs to get out there. So you that are watching, take this uh to your friends and family, your community, your region out there uh all across Navajo. And um, you know, we wish to uh give you um all the information that you need. And uh, you know, again, as leaders, we do recommend that uh you do uh, you know, bring those um uh messages back to your people, uh, as we all care for our families, you know. Uh, heard of instances of of people not wanting to meet with other family members that haven't been vaccinated, right? I mean, those are s- stiff, strong messages, but still uh uh gotta respect the wishes of those that uh do uh, you know, request that of their family, and it's all out of love. So again, you know, we are all in this together. Uh, real quick, uh, then I'll bring up Doctor Jill Jim. Uh, President did mention that we did have uh numbers for um New Mexico. Uh, the total positive cases for the uh the year is two hu- two um, two hundred and fifty five thousand five hundred and seventy seven. With um, uh, the surge that we saw, one thousand seven hundred and seventy six. And we had seen these numbers come down to like four hundred, five hundred, and now uh this surge is going on. Uh, there in San Juan County, the same, two hundred and fifty six new cases, and McKinley County, um, one hundred and forty nine new cases. So we do see some rapid spreading there, but we do wish for you to be uh safe as you're out there. And uh, we do wish for you to uh remain uh calm and uh, you know, again, just a heightened sense of your surroundings and the awareness that that we all should be bringing in this pandemic. Again, nothing's new, uh, just a continued sense of uh vigilance and diligence on our part. And I know it gets burdensome and uh, you know, everybody's wanting to get out and uh just uh uh extend their 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 life and their surroundings to uh, you know, uh, take in more normal things uh that we all do. But again, you know, with the safety of those that uh are suspect in our households, right? Uh, we don't wanna bring the virus home and we ourselves could be uh asymptomatic, but bring the virus home to our friends and family and our dear loved ones. So uh, again, at that, uh, I'd I'd like to take this time to um uh introduce Doctor Jill Jim here. She's gonna bring up uh some uh more uh information on the and the current surgeon that were going on and Dell and uh Captain Brian Johnson, uh, I believe he's ready to go. So uh, we will introduce Captain Brian Johnson here uh for you all. So uh, ladies and gentlemen, Captain Brian Johnson, Navajo Area IHS. Good morning, Captain.
Morning, sir, and uh thank, certainly thank you for the uh introduction. I appreciate it, appreciate you and uh President Nez for sure. Uh, continuing to share uh the information about COVID in a transparent way uh with the Navajo people here on the Navajo Nation. I always look forward on Tuesdays to providing, you know, updates and any any information that we can uh to uh support the knowledge base here on the Navajo Nation uh and making sure that uh everyone understands that um the healthcare system here on the Navajo Nation is working and um is uh integrated and working together to uh make sure that uh we're providing all the necessary services and doing all the, you know, monitoring that is needed from a public health perspective. Uh, so uh very much appreciate the work that continues uh with the Health Command Operations Center um and uh working uh together with the tribe and IHS and tribal health organizations. Again, this is uh Captain uh Brian Johnson. I serve as the Acting Deputy Area Director of Navajo Area Indian Health Service. I've been here a number of years on the Navajo Nation and uh continue to and certainly enjoy working with Navajo people. And um just wanted to add a few um um mentions today. And um I know that uh uh hearing a little bit, uh, Del Yasi will be sharing some information as well as hopefully Doctor Jim as well. And um I just wanted to uh restate that uh we continue working across the Navajo area um in terms of providing or monitoring uh case numbers, as was mentioned by President Nez and the Vice President Lizer. Uh, we continue to monitor certainly uh COVID nineteen uh testing that goes on uh throughout the Navajo Nation and uh help uh collect those data and aggregate those data and then share back to the uh public. But we continue to monitor hospital capacities. We we always do monitor our inpatient and ICUs here within the Anavil area to make sure that we're uh making sure that we have the adequate uh capacity to care for our patients. And uh, and whether that's COVID or non-COVID. And then also our contacting and tracing and um and other a- activities as well. So we know that uh when we look at a high level uh here at Navajo Nation that our cases do from time to time, they they do vary. And um those case numbers are reported on a daily basis. And I know that uh the Navajo Nation leadership does send those case numbers out pretty much on a daily basis, uh, almost like six to seven days a week. And uh we also know that uh the cases at this juncture uh seem to be hovering around, you know, anywhere between thirty five to forty cases per day. And um we've seen as many in the last, say, four weeks, we've seen as many cases as seventy four cases in in one day here on the Navajo Nation. But uh the the range has varied all the way from like six cases all the way up to seventy four, but uh we're still hovering in that thirty five to forty case on an average uh per day. Um, we know and and I know over time, I won't go into detail on it, but over time, we've talked a lot about the Delta variant that has been certainly more transmissible, and uh we certainly saw that. And um it can be uh more uh transmissible and more se- uh of a severe disease, which of course can result in uh more hospitalizations when we compare that to other variants of COVID nineteen. And um I just wanted to make sure that we continue to share the the knowledge. And I know that uh uh out there across Navajo Nation, we've we've shared information for many, many months now about the vaccine. And uh we just, we just n- n- uh need to continue the message that the vaccine continues to be um our our best tool against uh fighting this disease. So whether it's your first or second series doses or whether it's a booster vaccine that you might be looking for, um, all of them are important in the battle, the continuing battle that we're seeing here uh with COVID, COVID nineteen for sure. Uh, again, the uh, we know that there's lots of um misinformation that happens uh in in some of the news outlets uh that are less reputable sites. And so we continue to also share with the public that there's been no change in terms of, you know, the 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 vaccine continues to be safe and effective. you know, the, the, the vaccine continues to be safe and effective, um, at various levels. And it does pr- uh, provide a high degree of protection against, uh, severe illness, hospitalization or death associated with, uh, COVID nineteen. So we, we're still recommending that we continue down that path of vaccinations. I know I got mine early on and I got my second series, working on my booster possibly. But, um, yeah, it's, it just continues to be, uh, very, very important to make sure we stay as healthy, as possible, even if we do, uh, end up getting, uh, the, catching the virus. And as long as we have that, uh, vaccine, then it will reduce the impact of that, uh, against, against the doc, the virus. So, um, again, we continue to have, uh, adequate supplies, um, ample supplies of vaccine. And, uh, we do make sure that those get to our facilities across the Navajo area. We, both the tribal health organizations and the federal Indian Health Service organizations, uh, making sure, and there's communications that go on, uh, daily and weekly and phone calls where, um, we have the healthcare teams, uh, uh, conversing by phone about, um, supplies. And if there's any needed movement of the vaccine, to make sure we have enough supplies, then, then we do, uh, assist with that. We have individuals who focus on that and make sure that we're, uh, sharing and, um, working together to, for the benefit of the Navajo people. So, um, we, we remain, in terms of the IHS, we remain, uh, focused on vaccinating the whole family. And, um, so we continue, uh, doing the vaccinations for those who are twelve years and older. And, uh, just making sure that we're also offering routine immunizations as well. And I know there's been some conversation, uh, here today, as well as there's been past, uh, Facebook sessions and, maybe, uh, locally, there's conversation going on about, uh, influenza or the annual flu vaccines. And we are providing those as well. And we'll continue to do that, uh, in conjunction with the COVID nineteen vaccine. So questions about that? Again, I do recommend notifying or contacting your local health facility that you normally, uh, attend or report to. And, uh, they can certainly provide more information on that and how you can get your, uh, flu vaccine. And, and if you still haven't gotten your, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, vaccine, they'd be more than happy to, uh, help you with that as well. Um, in terms of, uh, vaccine events, we're, we're continuing to provide those. You know, our healthcare teams, whether we're at Crown Point, uh, Gallup, I- Indian Medical Center, uh, Cayenta or Shiprock or Crown, or, uh, Chin Lee, we continue to do vaccine events. And some of these events do take place, uh, on weekdays, others take place on the weekends. And so there are, uh, posters that, and information schedules that are, uh, released and, and put out to the public and also posted at the, uh, OPVP, uh, Facebook site. If you would like to, uh, make sure that, that you have that information. So that's information that can be provided. And again, your local health facility should also have that information if, if you need that. And, um, also wanted to just confirm that our COVID nineteen testing, uh, continues as President Nez, uh, earlier in this show, um, made some comments about, uh, uh, influenza and, and that we are seeing some cases of that. Uh, but, and, and which may be driving some more people to get tested. And so, we, we have seen an increase, an uptick in positivity. Uh, in, in slightly over ten percent of the, uh, testing that's done is coming back positive now. We were previously, uh, down in the, uh, a little over six percent and a little over eight percent range. And now we're up to over this, uh, little bit over ten percent. So that's something to be, uh, aware of for sure. Making sure that you're taking the proper precautions, maybe, uh, making us be a little bit more vigilant on our hand washing, on our distancing, and, uh, other activities that we're fully aware of, of at this point in the pandemic that we can do to, try to slow down or prevent, uh, getting, becoming infected, uh, with the virus. So, um, you know, testing for COVID nineteen will continue to be, uh, one of IHS's, uh, broader strategies to really monitor the spread and prevalence. So, so meaning, you know, if we're looking at the Navajo Nation from a bird's eye view, what does that look like? Where are we seeing more cases? Are we seeing them to the north, to the south, to the east or west, or maybe in central part of the Navajo Nation? Or where are we seeing that transmission so that we can make sure the contact tracers are on top of that? And, um, so this information that, that's, that's retrieved from testing is very, very helpful, has been helpful throughout the pandemic. And, uh, we're thankful for those individuals and the nursing teams and the providers who have led those efforts. I can't say enough about those teams across the Navajo Nation. I think they performed exemplary and continue to do that. And it's been a long road, but, uh, they continue to demonstrate leadership. They continue to look for, uh, patient safety, uh, making sure that the appropriate individuals are doing the testing, are monitoring the testing and sharing that information upward to the Health Command Operations Center with, uh, uh, Dr. Jim and her staff. So we appreciate their help, uh, as well. You know, last week, we shared just a little bit of information about booster shots. And, um, I, I know a number of the folks across Navajo Nation are familiar, are, are now aware that there has been some authorization by the CDC, what's referred to as the ASEP or the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices. And, um, for specifically for Pfizer, those individuals who have received, uh, the, the first two series at least six months ago, um, are now, uh, many are authorized to, to get a booster. But it's not just for, it's not for the general public at this point in time. Uh, the, uh, committee, the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices identified specific groups of individuals at this point to make sure that they're prioritized because they are at a higher risk of COVID nineteen. And, um, those, I'll, I'll just briefly mention those groups that have been authorized and approved by ASEP to, um, get their booster, uh, vaccines. And again, these apply to the Pfizer Biointex. Uh, vacs, uh, those individuals vaccinated with Pfizer Biointex. And, um, it, it includes people who are sixty-five years and older, as well as residents in long-term care settings. And, uh, both of these should receive a booster shot. It's, it's, it's recommended that they receive a booster shot as long as they were, uh, received their fir- first two dose series at least six months previously. So, um, in many events, um, we've been well past six months at this point in time. So there's a number of individuals that are certainly eligible for that. Also, people aged fifty to sixty-four years with underlying medical conditions should also receive a booster shot if they received the Pfizer, uh, two-dose series earlier on at least six months ago. So that's another group, the fifty-year, fifty-year-old to sixty-four-year-olds with underlying medical conditions. Um, also, people aged eighteen to forty-nine years old with underlying medical conditions. And those individuals, it's really up to the attending, uh, provider, the treating provider, as to whether those individuals should receive a booster shot. There are some conversations that the providers want to have with the individuals in this age group. Um, and, um, if they come to, if they come to the conclusion that they should have it, then that age group of eighteen to forty-nine with underlying medical conditions are authorized to receive the, uh, booster vaccine. Also, there's a, a final group, people aged eighteen to sixty-four years who are at increased risk for COVID nineteen exposure and transmission because of their, uh, their job or their occupational or, uh, whether it's in an institutional setting, they may receive a booster shot. So, um, for example, we have a number of people who are from the eighteen to sixty-four years old who work in the hospital setting, for example. And, uh, those individuals, uh, certainly, um, are at in- increased risk just by, uh, due to patients who are presenting to those facilities with COVID nineteen. So we know that that puts them at higher risk. And, um, so those eighteen to sixteen, sixty-four years old who work in those types of settings or other settings where there is a feeling that there's a higher trans- likelihood of transmission of COVID nineteen, uh, can certainly, uh, get the booster shot at this point in time. They're authorized to do so. Uh, I just want, so those are the four groups at this point in time that, uh, with, and those are all associated with the, with the Pfizer vaccine. And just wanna make sure folks know that at this time booster doses are not authorized or, uh, individuals that receive Moderna or the, uh, Janssen vaccine. So more information on those will be forthcoming, but for now, we're fo- that's focused on the Pfizer, Pfizer vaccine. Um, just wanted to make sure that folks, uh, take away a few important points as always. And, and that's just to know that, uh, this week, uh, similar to last week, the case numbers continue to fluctuate, but we continue to see in that thirty-five, forty cases on average per day. So we know that, uh, COVID nineteen continues to circulate here on the Navajo Nation. And as was mentioned earlier, uh, those areas and those functions that normally take, uh, place in the fall. I know, I know some folks, uh, have, have been going to the Fall Pumpkin Patch. Uh, I know that there's the State Fair going on and, uh, other venues that are, that, um, large crowds are, are getting together. So that could be why we're seeing a increase up to a little over ten percent at this point in time in terms of, uh, testing, very likely contributing to that. So I just keep that in mind. Uh, the Navajo Nation continues to monitor variant forms. So when we, when we first started this, uh, outbreak, we weren't really aware of the Delta variant, but then quickly became aware of it. So that's just one example of a variant of Delta that we're continuing to monitor. I continue to get reports on, uh, on a weekly basis. Uh, just getting information to make sure that we understand what type of COVID may be circulating in our environment and, uh, what, what we can do to protect ourselves. And then, of course, continue wearing your masks, watch your distance, washing our hands, keep your hands on a sanitizer with you. Um, making sure, again, we avoid large crowds, both indoors and outdoors. And, uh, remember that testing, it's certainly fine if, if you have any concerns about being tested. Uh, if you, if you feel that maybe you're, you're having some allergies, but you just don't know, feel free to go get tested, contact your local facility. They do have, uh, hours during the week, also on the weekends for testing. And, uh, just wanna make sure everyone understands that that continues to be available. And, uh, again, for those who are, uh, who are authorized to receive booster shots, that's something that you can reach out to your providers. We do know that our health facilities are also reaching out to those populations who do have underlying health issues to make sure that they are prioritized as well. So I think it's, communication is good both ways, not only from the health facility, but also, uh, from the patient to the health facility as, as well. And again, we always like to mention, uh, please make sure you're listening to, uh, reputable information, whether it's on the internet or if it's on the radio or other locations, maybe television. Uh, misinformation has caused a lot of issues in this pandemic. And we just want the best for Navajo people, uh, in listening to the most reputable, uh, sites. And, um, we know that Centers for Disease Control and other, uh, similar sites that are based on science and looking at, uh, data, um, that, that is well understood, is, is certainly reputable sites, uh, for, for COVID nineteen. But again, as always, let's reach community, continue to reach community immunity by protecting yourself, protecting your family, protecting our elders. And that we look forward to continuing our work with the Navajo Nation on COVID nineteen. And with that being said, I'm gonna turn it to, I believe, either Dr. Jim or it might be Dale Yasi. But, uh, I'll let them decide for now, but I'm gonna sign off and just say thank you to everyone for joining the Facebook session today. Appreciate it.
Uh, thanks, Captain Johnson, for that quick update. So, um, kha'ana sada jige, shee Dr. Jill, they mean chado, um, dona enesane, look, on eson tcha chini, basis chendo, eshe idosu chido, tla zla nae doshunawa. Um, at is bha'yan, de big eden shi do, kha'adi, um, hinat onin, hujahati, ah, la, kha'adi, president Nez do, vice president Wizer, kha'ye. Kha'ani eden nae, but jehnan e'ngi, kha'adi, kosta sa, the kosta sa'i, nas e'bs ada, excuse me. E'adi, kha'adi, e' an nahlni, do, ato, um, bihe katha, hota, sinhi, an na'atsu, do. Ashin, kha'edani, teldai, da, ni, lha', do, di, um, ah, kha'adi, t'andai kego, do, di, ah, na'neso, da, kha'adi, kha'go, kha'adi, eto, eto, ha'ili, an shee deya. Um, ha'ashin, zache, do, be'ehosinda, do, kha'adi, adi, kosi, do, nahlni, do, nan, chido, ni. Ata, ato, ha'ili, an shee deya, so, um, a che'ba lagana, de, it's a hatessa, so. Good, uh, um, good morning, everyone. I just wanted to do a quick PowerPoint presentation. Uh, some of the reminders that we often go through here through the pandemic, and I thought it would be good to, um, share some of these, um, sort of reminders that, um, we typically hear every single day, and that is just practicing the three W's and wearing your mask, washing your hands, and watching your distance wherever we are, um, just being cognizant of that. Um, with our elders, um, at home or at school, um, those are very important, um, places, public places. And I think what, uh, we mentioned is also the large gatherings that are happening out in the neighboring states, such as the state fairs, and also some larger events like PBRs have happened. So just, um, understand that we know that the Delta variant is the dominant variant here in the Navajo Nation. It's easily transmittable. And we've seen that. There's evidence that it is easily transmittable. So just be aware of how to continue to, um, take all the precaution that you need and that requires avoiding large gatherings. Um, we are still hearing of gatherings and some of the clusters and investigations that are contact tr- contact traces are hearing about, our birthdays, milestones, celebrations, there's, um, recently, Navajo Nation employees retired, so families could continue to be celebrating traditional ceremonies, religious church and other houses of worship, outdoor recreational events and youth programs, or some gatherings that we just wanna, um, make you aware of to try to keep limited individuals, um, out there, um, gathering, especially among unvaccinated individuals. There is evidence that, um, cases are high among those are, that are unvaccinated. Another thing to always remember is when you're waiting for a COVID test, just remember that, um, please stay home and do not go to work or school or public places. As I think President mentioned, um, staying home, especially when you're not sure if you, if you do have COVID or not. Even though if you feel like you have the regular flu, continue to stay home and make sure, making sure that you're taking precaution at home. And you might be wearing, um, a face covering at home in your own household because you're not sure. Making sure that you're not sharing household items, staying in a separate room or separate bathroom, cleaning and disinfecting frequently, washing your hands, monitoring your symptoms as well, and notifying people if you think you've been in close contact of others, if you, um, are sick as well. So just remember that if you have symptoms, take all the precaution that you can. I know that we've been in this, um, pandemic for a very long time. So I just want you guys to know that we do and we can, um, continue to reduce transmissions. And I believe that, um, these simple, um, ways to take care of ourselves can, uh, reduce infecting another person. So, if you don't have symptoms and you're waiting for a test, um, you can also continue to self-monitor yourself. We used to tell people to stay home, but if you're, if you're not a close contact, uh, what we usually say is to self-monitor until your results get back. And also making sure you wear face coverings and maintaining distancing as well. And if you test positive, continue to stay home, drink plenty of fluids and take medicine for pain. So, if you test negative, continue to, um, continue to stay alert. If you, uh, were exposed, um, to COVID case, you still need to quarantine for a duration of time. And also, regardless of your negative test result because you were exposed to a, another person that tested positive. So, um, continue to take all the precaution that you can. One of the areas that I, that we encourage everyone to look at is just the incubation period as well. Um, so as Jane is invited to a holiday party, and this is something that I'm recycling from last year, unfortunately, um, it still applies to today. And we're not unsure where, um, how long we're gonna be, um, experiencing this, uh, um, COVID pandemic. But Jane is invited to a holiday party with, um, people she does not live with. She has been waiting all year for this event.
And so I just want to message that to our listeners today that I hope that you find something positive to do for yourself today. Self-worth is very important at Nahu Castle. So either eat healthy or exercise today, choose one thing. And I hope that will help us continue to live in this pandemic that we don't know where the end of that is. But today Dr. Fowler will add some comments. I always appreciate her. And also Dell will go over our current numbers. So I'll hand it over to Dell Yazi. He's our epidemiologist with the Navajo Epidemiology Center. So take it away Dell.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jim. Hello, President Nas, Vice President Lizer, my colleagues. My name is Dell. I'm with the Navajo Epidemiology Center. And we provide this update every week, the gating measures, the path to zero cases from the analytical time period here is a two-week period from September 17th through the 30th. Is the numbers I will be going over. But before I begin, I know I show this because I want to acknowledge our partners who are part of this, our epidemiology team, our HCOC COVID-19 epidemiology team. There are a number of folks representing various entities that make up our team. We do have a large epidemiology team from our own Navajo Epidemiology Center, the IHS side, and also the 638 facilities. We're also partnering with some folks from CDC and the CDC Foundation, and with Hopkins Center for American Indian Health, and COPE, as well as TGEN, Translational Genomics from the Flagstaff Campus. They're the ones who are helping us with the COVID-19 strain surveillance work. And then, of course, our state partners from Arizona, New Mexico, and Utah are all a part of our epidemiology team. And just want to recognize them as they are, contribute a lot to our epidemiology work on COVID across Navajo. And so this is just recent cases and trends over a two-week period, as I mentioned. But this window, time window here is a 60-day time window from mid-August through to now as of, or the end of September, September 30th. So I always recognize or identify this peak here. This is back in August 16th. And since then, there was like 80 cases on that day. And since then, we've been on this plateau. As you see this red line, which is a nine-day weighted center moving average line. And it's been pretty flat and up and down, but it's a plateau. And we remain on that plateau currently. This was September 27th again, was the high case number count last Tuesday, a week ago, was 80 cases again. So, but we remain on this plateau of about, you know, 40, about 40 cases a day over a seven-day period. So we continue to remain stable. We still, I mean, we still see a high number of cases, but we're on this plateau currently as far as COVID cases on the Navajo Nation. And then our infection rate remains stable. The seven-day infection rate is 0.97. Last week was 0.98. Our threshold is at 1, so we're below 1, so that's a good sign. And this is just spatially, COVID situation on Navajo and around Navajo Nation, our border states. So you see a lot of red here, meaning that their incidence rate over a seven-day period is 100 cases per, plus cases per 100,000 people. So except for four defined service area, they're in this 50 to 99 cases per 100,000 people. But really, we continue to see cases throughout the Navajo Nation. You see all this red in all the service areas, except for four defines, but our bordering states. You know, with Utah, Utah has been seeing some increase in cases. These are their number of cases over a seven-day period. So that Utah's over 9,000. They've been hovering around about 7,000. So they've increased a little bit over a seven-day period from September 24th through September 30th. Arizona also, you know, they've been seeing an increase in cases as well. And also, New Mexico has seen increase in cases, especially the past couple of days. I think it might, as President Nas had mentioned, state fairs, you know, some of the impact might be occurring as far as cases occurring currently in the Mexico side. There's also, as you all probably know, the balloon fiesta is going on currently, which might, we might see some cases emerging from that going forward. And so, so just 298 cases over a seven-day period from the 24th through the 30th, which puts our incidence rate at 188 cases per 100,000 people, which puts us in the red, the red level according to our, the gating matrix that we, that we follow. I know the President Nas kind of showed this as well, just additional metrics, testing capacity. Our seven-day test positivity rate has been, you know, increasing over the past month. And now it's at 10.4% over a seven-day period. The testing has, this time around has increased a little bit from 600 and, I think it was about 660 to now 740 average daily tests in a seven-day period. So testing is ongoing across the nation at all the healthcare facilities on Navajo. And then hospital capacity, we remain stable, hovering around 60% for both hospital beds and ICU beds. And then our contact tracers to daily case ratio is at 4 currently. We like to be above 5, but we're below 5. So I know we're, there's ongoing efforts as far as hiring some additional contact tracers for, to follow some of our cases and clusters that are occurring on the nation. And President Nas showed this as well, Navajo Nation in orange, these are Epi-curves throughout the pandemic. The blue is the US. You know, there's been less cases occurring across the US recently. But we're, Navajo Nation in orange here, we're on this plateau, as I mentioned earlier. This is a seven-day incidence bar chart comparing Navajo Nation here in yellow to the 50 states plus a couple jurisdictions. And the red bars are the bordering states. As I mentioned, Utah's been seeing increasing cases. So they're up, up higher in this ranking here. And then Arizona, New Mexico, and Colorado. This time around, we're at 39th position. Last week was 49. So we went up 10 spots. So we trended the wrong way. But we've been hovering around, you know, in the upper 30s, low 40s for quite some time. So we're, we remain somewhat stable. This is, President Nas showed this as well. This is our new format, as you can see this table here, our COVID strain surveillance as of Report 22 last Tuesday. These are the numbers. So according to CDC, the variant of concern, the only variant that's, that's identified as a variant of concern currently is the Delta variant and its sublineages. So on the nation comparing Report 21 to 22, it went from 406 to 478. And then there's this Delta Epsilon variant went from 142 to 81. So that's, Delta is really the only variant of concern that's identified as such, even on Navajo and also across the US. And therefore, this table is formatted that way. But these variants below here are, again, according to CDC, are now labeled as variants being monitored, VOB. And these variants listed here are all the variants of variant being monitored, identified on Navajo Nation. So the Alpha variant, which is, you know, the UK, formerly known as the UK variant, went from 156 and remained at 156. The Gamma variant is formerly known as the Brazilian variant, remained at 8 from Report 21 to 22. The Epsilon variant, which is formerly known as the California variant, is at 21. And then these are other lineages or variants here, the Ayota variant here on the nation, five cases been identified as Ayota. Then there's this B.1.617.3 is another variant identified on Navajo Nation. And there's only one case. And then this Mu, the Mu variant on the Navajo Nation, there are eight cases. And then the Beta Gamma variant remains at 6. So going forward, we'll be showing this table with this new format, plus the Delta and all the other variants that are being monitored and that have been identified on the Navajo Nation specifically. And this is the variant profile across the US according to CDC. You see this orange bar is the Delta variant. Yeah, it's really currently the dominant variant, making up 99% of all, all of the variants as of September 25th. And this gets updated like every two weeks. So this is probably updated later this week. Just to picture, seven-day case rate across the US. This really has remained the same from last week within our region. Utah, just darker shaded blue, really has seen some increase in cases. New Mexico has turned a little this, this shade blue too. It used to be green to blue because they've seen an increase in cases as well. And also Arizona, so within our region, that's the situation. Just up here in the northern part of the US, there's also, you know, increase in cases as well, this darker shade of blue. In Alaska, I'll just briefly mention Alaska, the situation in Alaska is there's some, it's a dire COVID situation up there currently. They're having high, high numbers of COVID cases in Alaska. Just community transmission across the US, it's, you know, it's mostly red. And by counties here, all the counties within Navajo Nation continue to remain red, meaning there's high COVID transmission. These are the new 35 chapters that made the higher-risk COVID chapter list from last week. Last week was 40, so we did go down a little bit. So these are the 35 chapters that made this list. And I get a lot of questions on this. What's the criteria for chapters making this list? Is really these chapters, they had an increase in cases within their communities. And therefore, you know, their incidence rate is that greater or equal than, or equal to 100 cases per 100,000 people over a two consecutive week time period. So over two weeks, they have this incidence rate, plus, you know, they've seen an increase in cases over a two-week time period. So that's how they make, that's our criteria, criteria for these chapters making this list. Again, this was mentioned earlier, two drivers of transmission. We have contact tracers across Navajo Nation helping us with this work. They track cases, clusters, and they fill out this critical incident reports. For the past few weeks, it's, a lot of the reports are, our cases are coming from family gatherings. There's a birthday party here where a lot of, some of the cases emerged from this party. There's workplace cases, this is a school bus yard in Tubus City, where there's some transmission of cases occurring between employees at this bus yard. Really, the index case coming from a home with a positive COVID case and bringing it, you know, to work. And they transmitted the COVID disease to other, other colleagues within this school bus yard setting. School transmission here, this is an elementary school in the Chinley Service Unit. There's one report with a confirmed transmission. This is really within an elementary school. My understanding of this is a special needs school where there's, you know, there's challenges to wearing masks and social distancing within a special needs school environment classroom. So that's that situation here. The boarding school here in Tubus is again masking and social distancing not being adhered to within this setting. Recommendation, risk level assessment. Cases remain high, where remain in the red threshold. You know, there's the Delta variant really is the dominant variant on Navajo Nation. And across the US, our test positivity remains high and it continues to increase. Now it's at 10.4%. Hospitalization remains stable, around 60% for both ICU beds and regular hospital bed. Drivers of transmission really remain from gatherings. And we still have no evidence of transmission in a business setting, such as, you know, grocery stores, gas stations, et cetera. So this is our, where are we right now? We remain in the red level due to our cases, testing, and public health capacity are all in the red threshold based on our gating matrix and the orange level for hospital capacity. So that's our situation on the Navajo Nation currently. So I'm going to stop here. And I believe I hand it over to Shama, Dr. Fowler. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, President, Vice President, Dr. Jill Jim, and Captain Brian Johnson. Captain Brian Johnson. [speaking Navajo] 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 jo'has, chuis'zani. Ado, amma, isha'ena, fini, en'asah, na'fini, nichita, oh, yehat. Kodo, she'et, lato, eh, shi', ishtat, da'pa, da'asha, ke'nde. Ado, kutsan, va'achneh, oy, do, danhe'di, tsat, ah, do, nahas, chuis'zani, ben, do, da'di, do, das, in'asen, da, onneh, and, oy, onneh, eh, chik, oh, oko, shat'chineh, na'fini, nahas, chuis'chani, inlini, haj'ot, in'asen, be'tis, nachtsa, be'ke'ha, na'ha, eh. Ado, na'tani, da'ah, na'met, eh, do, da'ke'dini, zin, do, da'se'itni. Okon, de'shi, di, na'chni, he'shi, beni, na'etsa, oh, ashkut, ah, kortho, 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 ah, do, leh, do, na'teh, hashtuidosani, amma, aj, en'sah, linii, yana, antchen. Ado, en'ah, ke'ha, kuni, zaba, akol, ya, haj'oh, isen'ach, ah, ni'chilneh. Ah, ah, ba, ba'han, ni'tsindeh, jo'kodo, eh, nichi, iyo, in'chini, ni'ben, ah, ben, da'ni'tchen. Oko, di, dekuznas et adah, padid neneh, do, la'ha, in'orneli, adi, na'chni, chik, e'lo shet ne'eh. Ni'chitzat, do, eh, ni'tsindeh. Ado, hashineh, la, n'ra'achneh, ni'chijin, chik, yewet, chik, ke'jke' danlini, ado, ashtuidosani, deh, at'lat, dadilkos. Eh, flusha, sa'elni, isel, naha'na, do, li, isel, isel, in'agota, do, tcha. Elshashi, do, do, khorst, tan'deh, jo'op, be'tchah, isel, naha'na, do, li, jo'eh, do, kodo, isel, ine, ine, eh, ah, be'ehot, eh, flusha, wanyeni'gi, de'khorst, ado, si, ni, do, ado, eh, ya, tcha, ho'de'ni, jo'eh, da'tehi, eh, adi, isel, ba'ta, hona, eh, be'ehot, ke'inni, ni'chilneh. Ado, di, ko'aj, ch'os, ch'os, loit'ini, be'tre', isel, i, da, jo'eh, ah, be'ehot, ke'tan, ni'chilneh. Ado, ashkoreh, kodo, banan, he'nikha, et'ah, okol, ya. Ni'chidon, isel, ab, tada, de'ezbalon, dahke'. Ado, ni'illa, et'horst, isun'edoh, tal'oh, wesh, eh, tan'dahkes. Eltsan'aha, elshashi, i'illa, ken, da, do'hldeh, deh, eh, ah, ko'. Ado, be'ke'ro, eh, di, ch'os, loit'ini, bena, ceri, ch'os, i, go'ya, tcha. Ah, ah, ni, eh, di, dekuznas et adah, padid neneh, hashin, sa'go, eltsan'chinen, do, yin, ni, in'chinen, eh, na, da'do, ya, kon, da, hashto, it'ado, leh, chik, e'lo shet ne'eh. Hashi, no'la, eh, elchatso, do'se. Ado, nichid, kodo, nahatso, da'di, zin. So, da'do'se, do, nichidin, da'ta, hono, ni, yehat, nichidin, mi'do'leh, jo'ah, eh, eh, be'hotzke, do, be'hotzi. Jo'eh, na'oh, leh, la, haj'otso, do'so, na'teh, hashtuidosani, da, netso, do'sun, eh, do, aj, ke'jeh, jo'ra, da. E'tbenon, na'da'alke, eh, ah, na'da'alce, t'hadetin, da, nda'da, de'thot, na'da'alcha, be'tre'tso, da'do'se. Jo'ah, nichidin, it'eh. Ado, di, na'chni, shen'ach, ni'chida, yehat, koe'deh, na'chni, sh, ado, hashi, no'la, ashtuisani, tanlini, kon, na, nish'deyos, pa', oh, ba'ye'hnitsin. Oko, ado, di, da'tango, da'shi, oy'ona, huinosen, aj, ch'edodo, de'oda. Ga'triniapa, ash'te'jilki, do'bel, isit, do'bel, ch'eho, chilki. Ado, di, kudina, ah, Navajo Nation, be'di, ni'chilneh, jo'at'at, adah, da'eneh, executive and legislative branch, ado, judicial, ashke'jeh, b'tadilna, jeh. Oko, aj, eh, di, isel, ba'atalya, asla'afes, beltcha, ah, kader, asla'afes, be'ti, yeh'la, oko, eh, ninety-one percent, eh, ni, eh, aj, isel, ah, ch'etjeh, ba'atalya, okon deh, booster sha'ik, adnan, ba'na'ho, chish. Ado, na'ha'neh, eh, din, da'chni, shitanach, ni'ashon, da, ah, eskuna, ado, da'osan. Ha'la, di, edje'ya, di, naho, edjilki, mo'nda, edje'yi. Oko, na'teh, b'tanachneh, shi', cha'd, shi', tchadiyani, do, b'ton, he'da, hosen, da. Ado, di, ch'ana, ha'ni, do, ol'san, in'asen, da, ni'he'di, neh, on, zat, beni, ye, wot'no, wot'eh, ya, shal'chineh. Ado, shik, e'lo shet ne'eh, beni, ye, wot'no, eh, ch'adod, da, eh, ah, ko'. Elshashi, kodo, ah, hovadeso, tan'he'di, ni'indeh, jo'do, do'tz, ah, ib, beni, na, kodo, ah, hashin, sa'ga, ba'na, huilneh. Ado, nichit'ha'neske'go, nichit'is, da'do, wot'eh, do, eh, do, ah, hovadeso, da. Ado, eh, leave, da'shi, da'holo, eh, da, ha'na'tani, ni'chilneh, b'tchok, ke'koe, eh, yo, shet'ha'neske'ko, onzat, isha'detro, ah, jo'eh, koa'ha'na'tani, ni'chilneh, haj'oh, elilcha, asen, ol, ya. Ado, di, hot'ah, elsham'te'kléh, i, do, haj'op, en'often, Zoom meeting, da'de'elneh, Go-to meetings, da'de'elneh, ah, alha'na, ni, haj'op, oh, ol'ah. Di, kadeh, na'kin'ah, oh, hot'ah, elsham'te'klého. Hashineh, na, adi, do, jo'haj'ot, chil, i, go', elsham'te'kléha, shi', kudet, yata'the'oh, ts, eh, gachi, yana'tchilteh, buta, ol'ah, haj'op, en'achin'ochin. Ado, di, be'ha'ani, do, haj'ont, da'no'li, do, haj'op, beke'ot, ke'di, de'neb, ha'ha, ah, Navajo Nation employees, da'nalchini, review the policies, ado, teleworking agreement, da'ta'holo, COVID leave, da'ta'holo, ado, di, temperature check, da'atall, ini, haj'oh, atall, na'oh, leh, la, jun'ke'di, ni. Ado, di, kudkushiteh, ah, deh, y'tchito, da'hanitpa. Pa'ash'te'oh, neh, ni'chimah, ni'chijeh, ni'chinsah, ni'chinalen, y'tche'ed, da'danlini. Chesh, da, ban, da, oh, ye, ho'man, be'kadeh, da, be'ke'la, altki, jo'eh, ah, yilneh. Ado, kodo, eh, di, Halloween, da'de'elnet, la, so, beni, t'hashi, da, la'kesh, mesh'na'cha, aj, be'tre'na, da'huel, chish. Oko, o'sha'ha'na, ne'teh, do'leh, shan'ta, fe'ya, da, eh, di, do, t'ha'j'ot, ta'alneh, da'ni'he'di, no, be'ke'ha, ah, eh, krei, eshol'ye, ni'chik, kodo, bay'ana, ne'iltke, do'leh, nas, go'neh, ni'teh, be'eta, akol, ya, do, be'eta, ha'nosen, jo'eh, it'eh. Koa'ah, do, na'chni, shi', nichidin, no, eh, na'lnish, do, nok'teh, nichidin, ni, da. Ne'na, nish'hol'no'go, be'eta, akol, ya, jo'eh, adi, ni. Do, eh, la'ho, et'ah, shi', kodo, sa', do, ya'tehi, be'eta'al, eni. Oko, lak'oa, di, be'ke'ni, ish'ei, shan'leni, da'ton'oh, nichidzat, do, haj'op, ban, so'ta, ak'es, da. Haj'op, ban, so'ta, ak'es, ado, onda, sad, inlini, be'edjilki. Oko, di, oy, yu, na'ah, ho'ke, ban, da'alteh, ado, da'al'yskot, da. Ado, leh, jo'hyit'hal'go, da'lan, da'di, kha'. Ado, di, pankim, pach, belun, pi'asada, halneh. Okon, den'ya'go, okon, den'ey'sko. Ba'akol, ya, na'achneh, b'tanach, ke'gi, ba'akol, ya, bedol, na'ko, hovada, ne'nsa, go', ni'chit'oh, kodo, tcha. Oh, hon, neh, la, elshat, do, oko, deit'eh, da, ke'ya, be'chisa, da'hanitno, na'duk'wi, na'tegoshi, da'do'tre'tan, de'ke'da. Jo'oh, hot'ehi, it'eh, ado, asap, do, ya'tehi, na'tehi, be'hol'no, chik, e'lo shet ne'eh, na'kodo, naha'ha, ni'tsindeh, na, in'he'di, na'afra, na'go, at'hat'elzi, na'chni, skok. Leh, be'ti, be'zat, do, b'tat, adeshbalo, b'tanachneh, sh'eh, koe'ah, nish'ton, zat, b'tat, empat, oh, la, yo, yet'lo, do, oh, koe'ah, yi'ya, da, banan, na'j'op, be'chana, z'atzih, olcha, da'ah, na'na, it'eh. Hashineh, la, n'ha'achneh, da, haj'oh, be'ti, do, be'zat, da'ta, de'ezbalon, da'ke'. Ado, hashineh, la, eh, di, appointment, da'do, ya, isel, i, go', isel, in'be'tre'tan, de'kha. Okon, na'ko, et'ho, da'inakha, be'eta, akol, ya. Hashineh, la, ni'ke'ni, ni'kon, be'ti, do, b'tat, de'ezbalon, dahke'. Okon deh, nichit'eneh, na'chni, ad, na'ha, kon, he'di, do, ni'zat, b'tat, de'ezbalon, na'ha, yehat. Jo'oyu, ilha', ah, ni, ilha', at'eh. B'ten'eh, da'nlo, i, da'ha'ra, oh, go'ni, yo'te'ja, be'ti, da, elshui, yonleh, be'ke'ni, jo'ra, elsh'et'ah, oh, oh, zit'eh, da, chik, e'lo shet ne'eh. Ado, hashi, no'la, la'as'yu'go, da'al'ylleh, et'ad, ah, khat'oh, beso, da'yah, ta'tchik, asha'oh, beso, do, idin'sen, da. Ah, nek, koe'ani, in'la, eh, ya'ta, halni, go'la, asha', ah, ta'al'eh. Oko, online payment, da'do, wanyeni, da, b'ta'ol'ah, aj, eh, tski, oni, eh, ya. Ado, na'ha'neh, eh, di, la'as'yu'go, da'in'ish'go, ah, ah, ni, tz'ke'jke' danlini, kodo, na'chnish, be'tre'pe, ol'cha, deh, do, yin'asen, da. Oko, oy'go, di, da'tan'ko, da'akot, eh, shorts, da. Hashin, sa'ch'innah, nish, ado, ni'china'eh, ya, do, ado, o, yid'wo. Asho, ah, neh, koe'na, nish, eten, da'ton'oh, be'dan, hi'ofch'irigi, ah, nichit, nichidin, eh, do'ta'teh. Na'chnish, do, yedineh, na'go, do, la, be'tre'izaga, oy'ta, ah, de'do, weh. Eh, na, koe'adi, trini, ta'hanio, trini, b'tanach, ano, do, khat'ha'ha, j'shi'i, eh, beni, na'di, na'chnish, be'toh, ye, elto'oh. Eh, do, haj'op, ban, so'ke, so, eh, nichid, kodo, di, ni'ni, be'ke'ho, it'eh, da. Na'chnish, inlini, shi', chit'neh, in'neh, ha'la, di, dekuznas et adah, na'chni, he'ben, na'teh. Ado, t'angel, be'eta, hosen, di, trini, b'tanach, ago, ah, nichit, ch'eka, ot'eh, ni. Ah, nichit, trini, ha'shi, koe'ah, yilna, de'tja, ah, ni'chia, aj, isis, besitla, ah, nichin, altsos, be'hi, ni. Oko, oh, hot'ah, ho'de'shi. Oko, de'la'al'yu'go, na'chnish, inlini, be'toh, ye, eh, do, na'ha'ba, ah, onasen. Oko, ben, nichit, eh, eh, ya, chik, e'lo shet ne'eh. Kodo, ba'na, astra, ah, neh, ah, nichit, be'eta, akol, ya, eh, ya. Nichit, these, inlini, ba'akol, ya, these, inlini, ba'hasen. Ado, n'ha'achneh, nichit, so, ken, chinalike, be'ina, da, ini, ado, nichi, man, ch'eh, say, nichinalen, nichit'che, nichamasan, ado, ni'inal, klo, shi'. Nichi, hovan, ha'ha'det, eh, ni'gi, ba'akol, ya, ha'la, ah, nichin'ach'hanas'la. Ashi, inni, kodo, de'neh, k'echit, eh, ba'ya'tch, ke'indeh. Jo'she'el, da'do, wot'ah, de'neb, za'bo, ol'ah, ni'chisad, in'joni, it'eh. Haj'ot, si'st, ah, oh, eti, he'dji, ni'la, bo'wixdol'ah, la, od, esch, chik, e'lo shet ne'eh. Ob, be'ke'na, shen'leh, oh, oh, in'zikis, ya, da, na'na, eh, ina, deh, ni. Ch'no, eh, do, bo'wixdol'ah, ta. Ni'chisad, inlini, ya, yego, di, in'ol, esch, chik, e'lo shet ne'eh. Oko, di, kodo, ah, ben, stso, it'ah, do, ah, ben, ish, ah, ni, it'ah, ah, be'ke'it, chani, it'ah, kodo, n'ha'at, nahash, ne'do, ah, ben, la, na'antcheni'gi, shit'oh, ya'gi. Kodo, so'tzala, inlini, it'ah, di, ishtuidosani, ben, da'antcheneh, eh, ish, eh. Ash, haj'oh, isens'ta, da'shanen, na, na, di, sh'tla, len'son, n'tse'ih, ke'zit'eh. Oko, shik, e'lo shet ne'eh, hashin, za'go, wot'ah, di, he'didon, isel, b'tadad, de'ezbalon, de'ke'da, do, be'hasen, da. Eh, ay, yilneh, ishtuidosani, et'ah, akol, ya, nas, do, eh, hasen, da. Jo'eh, ah, yilneh, eh, na'msh, chik, e'lo shet ne'eh, haj'oh, be'eta, akol, ya.
I'd like to thank all our listeners again. I said a lot of this in Navajo. I want to acknowledge all our law enforcement, our health, our, our health profession, our educators. The virus and the variant is still around. We recommend that you get the vaccine. We recommend and plead with you to get your flu shots. We want you to continue to take precautionary measures, wearing your mask, keeping the social distance to our Navajo Nation employees and our employees in surrounding areas. Please be mindful of the policies. Continue to review your policies. Continue your Zoom virtual meetings. Limit your travel. If you're sick, please contact your immediate supervisor, stay home. If you have to look into your teleworking agreement, I'm happy to report that we are ninety-one percent vaccinated between the executive and legislative branches within the Navajo Nation. Thank you for getting vaccinated. We did talk a little bit about the booster shots. The booster shots are available to those individuals that got the Pfizer vaccine. Again, I talked, we talked a little bit about the interfire, the four areas that the, the booster shots are available. We want you to prepare for the upcoming winter months. Prepare for the upcoming holidays. We will provide you with Halloween veterans, the upcoming holiday guidance. And be aware of your surroundings teachings. We're not specifically telling you to not to go to work, but if you're feeling sick, don't go to work. We know you have to put food on the table, we have, you have to pay your bills. It's just a matter of us telling you to be cautious and take care. We love you and we continue to provide these messages. When you're in school, continue to take preventative measures. We understand that when there's appointments, medical appointments, take care of yourself. When you're going grocery shopping, take care of yourself. We don't know who, where, where you're getting your groceries, you're going to pay your bills. There are some places that are not taking cash anymore. We recommend you do some online payments and on and on down the line that I've gone over, but most importantly, to my people, you are important. We care for you. We want you to take care of yourself, your family. We know a lot of us lost loved ones. Our deepest condolences to all the families that lost loved ones. And this will end my message. Again, I appreciate all of you that are listening and I'm probably, I probably should be saying this to people that are not online, but we're doing the best that we can with what we have. I appreciate leadership, all leaders, we're all leaders. Everybody's a leader, or there's leaders at home, you know.